I'd like to call the Planning Commission to order today. Four members are present, one is absent. We have established quorum. There are no cases on the agenda today, so we'll move directly to communications. The first item on the communications agenda is lot coverage requirements. We had asked the planner to prepare a presentation on what the impacts would be on reducing the, or actually adding a total lot coverage to the current ordinance. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is in relation to an initial discussion that we had at the Planning Commission on July 7th of this year. I believe in Charlene's packet, page 2, there is the recommendations that I provided to the Planning Commission. At the last, about a month ago, it was requested that we kind of look at the impact of what's going on right now and potential impacts. If we were to create a lot coverage requirement that addressed not only the size of a building, the maximum footprint of a building relative to its lot size, but also other things that occur on a lot, such as driveways, et cetera. And the reason I thought it was important that we look at that is because we are seeing a lot of lots that are being almost entirely covered with tarmac and building. We are losing green space. We have a shade tree ordinance that only requires you to put trees in. Front yards, backyards are disappearing. A lot of these issues are in our floodplain, so it is increasing the rate of infiltration of water during flood events. And so what I've done is, as you can see on this, I'll slowly go over what you're looking at. The first thing that you're seeing is all the orange stuff, okay? That is impervious surfaces within the city of Athens. And this was created working with Stephen Porter, who is a GIS specialist at Ilgard. We took a ortho photo, which has infrared imagery on it, and basically we subtract, the infrared imagery can read or determine what is ground cover, what is green space, what is shade tree, what is water, what is open fields. And it can also, and so what we did was, we figured out what those were with 95% confidence. And then we removed all of that from, and what was remaining is lot coverage. And it's pretty accurate. If anything, I think it's a conservative estimate, as you can see. Let me see if I can do some zooming in for you. But here's East State Street, for example. And in this area right in here, this is actually roadway, but the infrared imagery reads it as being green space because there's a shade tree. The shade tree canopy is blocking it from reading the surface. You can see like in here, there's some sidewalk area, and the same thing is occurring. So in essence, it's, it's underrepresenting what we actually have today, in my assessment as well as in Stephen's assessment. We also deleted several things that were about 150 square feet or smaller. Parking spaces generally what?
180.
About 100 square feet.
180.
180 square feet. And so if it was smaller than that, we thought that might have been an error based upon possibly standing water or something, or the infrared imagery wasn't reading it well. So we deleted that as well, so we know that there's even less going on.
Okay, we were looking right there at East State Street and May area, was that what we're looking at?
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
And that's mostly a B1 zone and an R1 zone, I believe.
Correct. And I do have zoning I can bring up on here for you. The impact there is, from what I've really discussed and where my main concerns are in relation to planning and future development, is in our R districts. I do think the R districts and B districts should likely be treated separately. There's always a need for parking in your B districts, there's a need for parking in your R districts as well. However, several things that we've been working on recently have to do with stormwater issues, floodplain issues. Many council members as well are concerned about the disappearance of green space. When we're looking in some of our R districts, I'll give you an example here. You can see right here, this is Palmer Street, okay? And... This is 27 Palmer, this as an example.
And this is an R3 zone.
That's in an R3.
Okay.
And that has 75% lot coverage. I mean, it only has 75%, including buildings and parking lot. And that is likely a conservative estimate. If you look at 23 Palmer, which is also in an R3, that's at 91% lot coverage. So eight, about 9% of that is reserved for green space, potentially. And that might just be the strip that's actually in the right of way, between the sidewalk and the curb.
Okay, so the bottom line, you're telling me a few things. First of all, that any lot coverage we're talking about in that 60% range would really be for the R1 to 3. Some of the areas of R3s obviously would become nonconforming with legislation.
Correct.
What's the R2s and the 1s look like in, as, you know, as another look? I mean, basically, we're going to cover all three zones, so...
Right.
This is obviously one of the areas of concern. It's flood prone, it's flood area, stormwater runoff management's going to have to deal with this somehow. I guess the question I have is, you know, we're looking at one example, what are the other examples in lower density?
Let me, I'll bring you up to some of the R1 districts. And they're in pretty good shape. In fact, I analyzed a few of the planning commissioners' properties, just to see where they were. In fact, and I believe Mr. Sumney, RJ, yours, your lot coverage was at approximately 20%. And I know at the last meeting you had asked the impact, and that was your driveway plus your home.
You can add some more.
So when I add my new room, my new room, I can...
You can basically add about a third the size of your footprint. I believe it's an R1, so you can go up to 30%. So you have plenty of room there if you wanted to expand.
Can I backtrack on the Mill Street? You did like the Palmer area of Mill Street. How is that affect, is there, when we did the one house for the Title 41, and we talked about the lack of drainage going down Mill Street, how much does that impede as far as when we're talking about the lot coverage and everything? How much does that impede the fact that we have lack of drainage or proper drainage in some of the streets?
Well, it increases the problem if we don't have any onsite drainage. You know, your lawn prevents stormwater runoff to a significant effect.
But what I'm getting at is that that increase then, I mean, is not so much the fact that maybe some of these properties have, are at 60% or exceeding, you know, is that exacerbated though by the fact that the city doesn't have sufficient storm drainage going through certain parts of town?
In some ways, it probably is. If we don't have adequate storm drainage, then we're definitely creating problems if we don't have adequate controls on our stormwater runoff. To meet demand for stormwater runoff through adequate, through municipal drainage does have a significant cost to it as well, and that's a cost that we all as taxpayers would be bearing. So there's a couple of key issues there, I think, that are, and Andy, I'm sure can give you some really eye-opening estimates of what it costs to really upgrade your stormwater system.
Mayor, could you interject?
One of the things, reasons why we're starting to look at this, of course, not only is just the backyard's being paved over, but the fact is that we fully expect for the next few years to be mandated with the next two years of having a stormwater management plan. We have major areas that do not have stormwater infrastructure. So we're going to have to address how to slow down the runoff, which is the 60% we're discussing here, and then how to actually include, you know, a management plan and put that in place. Right now, stormwater, storm sewer infrastructure is basically covered by either streets or sanitary sewer front lines. Sometimes water, I suspect, but I don't know for sure. Just, I just know that it's kind of like an orphan fund that we do put something in occasionally, but most of the time, you know, what's there is there for the most part. And there are major gaps. I was highly aware of it when we had a water break on Washington Court here, right in the middle of the intersection, so to speak, and the water would run down. If you follow the water, it came down the curb, all the way down to Union, went down Union, past the old Baker Center, went down in front of Cantler, and there's a storm sewer there. So it had to go three quarters of the way around the block to get to a storm water, a storm sewer. So you can see that we have, even in a highly developed area here, we have, we have gaps. Again, I think that down that area, you have to also balance storms, sanitary storm sewers with what's going to come back at you, because that is flood prone, and somewhere in a flood event, you know, the water won't be going down, but it'll be coming back up the same pipes. And that's another issue too, which is why, you know, the course of river we lined. So there are concerns. There are, you know, whole areas that don't have great service as a result. We're trying to build them when we put it in. Here, you can see a lot of new stuff that's occurred on the Roundabout area originally.
Just so you can see a few more examples in some of the R districts. This is on the east side, this is Elmwood at Wad. Not sure why I can't get that blue off there. So I apologize.
I don't know what that is. It looks like a right-of-way line.
Here's a, no, it looks like I took care of it. The selected polygon, that's at 27%. And you can see the home, that's 59. A lot of room on there if they wanted to build down, even going, they still have room to even build on their footprint, most likely, for their home if they wanted to put an addition on. But if they wanted to continue to pave, they still have a lot of space.
How about the first ward?
First ward?
West side.
West side, okay.
Like brown first.
Oh, sure.
You could always pull my house up, I guess. Since you did do all those studies.
I do have your parcel data here.
Okay. Since I've been exposed.
In fact, I have all...
20%, 20%.
I have all four of the Athens city residents on. Well, I may be dead, I may be 24, who knows? This laptop system I'm using is not what I'm typically using for this.
Keep in mind, the numbers he's selling you right now are a mixture of the structure and the parking and everything. Total number would be, what, 60%?
And what you're telling me really is that we still have the regular bulk controls, 30% for an R1 for a house, garage.
Correct.
And then another 30 for driveway, patio, sidewalk, everything else that's non-permeable.
Is this you, Mayor? Three Mary?
Yeah, it looks like Three Mary right there. Go for it.
Looks like trouble.
105% coverage.
Wow! Probably pretty close, look at that.
You're at 40.
40, right there.
Yeah.
So if my house burns down, I need a variance to rebuild it there.
Well, that includes, do you have a driveway or a patio?
Yeah, but I don't see it in that footprint. I do have a deck in the back, yes. And actually, if you look at that, the setbacks is higher than regular as a result, because it's deeper, it's wider than it's deeper. What's 1 look like?
36%.
36. She has a driveway and a deck as well.
And you can see that, we basically, we calculated that number, I used, we knew what the coverage was, we had that coverage area, and I divided that by the square footage of the lot. So that's how those numbers come out.
Okay, how about towards Brown, going a little bit to the east of that? If you shift it a little bit. I'm thinking the, that's more the older, denser part of town.
This is, again, all these are total lot coverage maximums that you're finding?
Correct.
For your house and parking?
House, garage, driveway.
So what were you, you were suggesting 60% for an R?
My suggestion was to keep the, the building lot coverage requirement as is, which in an R1, an R2, I believe it's 30.
Yeah.
And then an R3, it's 30, it's 40.
Yeah.
For apartments and, correct.
Yeah.
And then adding to those bulk controls, an additional requirement that says that the total lot coverage of impervious, so that would be your building footprint plus driveways plus garage, et cetera, could not exceed 60%.
For all, all residential zones?
R1, R2s, R3s, right. Now, that, again, that was my recommendation.
So it would imply you could, in an R3, you could have more house structure, but less patio or pavement than in R1?
Correct. And when John and I did a study of how things had been built in our R3s, what we were finding is that they were not maxing out the building footprint. They were, they were scaling that down, but they were maxing out was the footprint for their parking lots.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, they were only about 20% on the building, they were going vertical, and then putting in another 40% of the lot for parking.
Right.
And that's it? This would not cover vertical additions?
No, because it's just the footprint.
Okay. And an R, if I'm looking at the bulk controls, which you also gave to us in the packet, Table A, in R3, rooming houses, apartments, non-residential mixed use are 40% right now. So really, you're saying you'd only be able to add another 20% to that mix?
If the footprint was at 40%, which we're finding was very unlikely.
Because they're typically, though they are larger houses, they're taller.
Correct.
Than what we're finding in R1s.
There's also in a lot of the R3 areas, it should be noted that that is floodplain, so there are requirements for elevation. And so you may have to elevate anyway, and you could elevate to an extent where you put the parking underneath, so you are still maximizing parking and having your residential on top of that. We've seen that at the bottom of Mill Street with a, I think Mill and Elliott, there was a property that they built, and they had the garage on the ground floor. That's the reason to elevate, correct.
And what RJ was talking about, if he had, it was at 75%. If they had have put just half of their parking underneath, that would have taken it down to 55%.
And they would have met their, they still would have met their onsite parking requirements.
Yeah.
They're building more than is required.
Do you anticipate anybody coming at us and saying we need to do, change the height requirements as a result, or no? Just, I mean, we just talked about building up. Let's see, non-res, R3, actually, they got 3 and 1/2.
Yeah, a lot of those are already, yeah.
Probably somewhere along the line. I don't think that's going to happen, especially in the R3s on the three stories, because now you're getting into some building code issues and height requirements.
What if it's 3 and 1/2 plus the open?
The garage counts, is that basically, we're looking at that as that, that's your half. And then you go two stories above that.
Even if it's just open, like on piers, so to speak?
Yeah. Because it, well, whether you count it or not, it has 45 feet, is that what it is?
Yeah, 45.
45 feet anyway, so, counting that.
Right.
If we use the example of the Mill Street, the one that we approved here as a commission, what would have changed? I mean, would they, you're saying they would have had to put parking in underneath instead of the additional parking that they included in that, or?
Well, I'd have to, I mean...
Want a mill iron?
I believe I have the notes here and what John and I found, we did a, we evaluated, we took six of the most recent.
Yeah, we didn't do that one.
But we did not do Mill yet.
We did Mill iron.
Mill iron, Stewart, West State, and two others on Stewart, to see what would, what would have been approved. And what we found were that four of them, four of the six would have been approved, you could have done exactly what you did as far as the number of bedrooms and the number of parking spaces, and achieved better design, from what we've been talking about. You could have done everything that you wanted to do and still did it at 60% or less of your footprint.
The majority of those have eight-foot-high crawl spaces because of the flood regulations.
Anyway.
Yeah.
Sticking a car in it.
Sticking a car underneath them.
Now, there is no doubt, if something like this were in place, that some of the developments that have occurred in Athens in the last 15 years would not have been able to occur as they did. They would not have been able to build as big, they would not have been able to put as much parking in. My understanding from a lot of the citizens I talked with and a lot of the discussions at the Planning Commission and that City Council, and through our comprehensive plan process, is that a lot of the building that's occurred, we don't think was done in the best manner. A lot of it. Now, there are some, certainly some really good examples of what's happened out there. From a planning perspective, from a floodplain perspective, I do think there's some things we really need to look at, and I think limiting that total lot coverage to about 60% can address a lot of issues that we're all, we've been concerned about. And it still gives a lot of freedom to the property owner to build and maximize.
And the Shade Tree Commission is requesting 40% recovery as well, so kind of...
It goes in line with that, it goes in line with our stormwater, the stormwater issues that we've wanted to work on, and it does come in line with the goals of our floodplain regulations.
You're saying Shade Tree wants the 40%?
40% canopy is their goal.
Just a little bit more information I'd like to show you. You can see here, if I can zoom in. Hold on.
Get used to that mouse, huh?
It's the world's smallest mouse. Relatively large.
You're like a seven-footed.
World's largest fingers. That's probably how Shaquille O'Neal feels, he's a normal guy.
That's how he feels with a basketball.
Plays beer pong with us.
What I wanted to show you is that a lot of this development that has occurred, this striped line, it's all floodplain. Okay. And so you can see...
We're looking at Mill Street right there again, right?
Correct.
Okay. Down by Hocking, it looks like.
Here's Palmer Street, here's Hocking, here's Elliott. A few things in relation to our code that I'd like to consider, and I've heard a lot of people say, "Well, the damage is already done." It would appear to me as if a lot of the damage has been done in this area. There is a lot of opportunity to really build out, doing the same techniques all through this area, and that is 100-year floodplain. We do have, if you remove that flood area map, you can see that there is still a considerable amount of trees in these areas. There is still some lawns, there's front yards and backyards that do have a positive impact on our floodplain regulations and our goals of maintaining our stormwater in a reasonable manner. So there is a lot of opportunity to see more of this 90%, 95% of impervious surfaces in these R3 neighborhoods. There's a lot of opportunity in our R2 neighborhoods as well, which we don't have very much left. And there's nothing to prevent it in an R1 neighborhood either. I've certainly heard a lot of people tell me, anecdotally, and just saying, you know, that the minute you pave a backyard, increase, turn a backyard into a parking area, that backyard, that home will never revert to being owner-occupied, ever. Because an owner-occupied person is not going to want to have a full-court basketball court. Most of them aren't. Maybe Shaquille O'Neal would again. But most people do not want that in their backyard. They want a backyard, and so once you've paved it, the cost of converting that back over into green space is, it's going to be a lot easier for you to just buy something in the plains.
I guess my, my major concern is the, what we're, are we going to see this on individual lots? Are we going to see this more happening where lots are combined to create, you know, development?
Well, I think, especially in our R3 neighborhoods, I would imagine, it seems logical to me that when it was rezoned to an R3, the expectation was that lots would be combined and you would see apartments being built.
Right.
As opposed to putting these additions onto it, those are all single-family homes that were just, you know, monstered out into three and four-unit apartments. And even this Palmer Street, when I graduated from OU back in 1997, I had friends that lived at 19 and 21 Palmer Street. That was a single-family home. It was a four-bedroom home, and now I think those are probably 12 or 14 bedrooms on each of those buildings, you know? That was only 13 years ago, 14 years ago, and so there's, and they had a huge backyard back there. The Palmer Street party, Palmer Fest did not take place on the middle of Palmer Street, it took place in that backyard. And there was a lot of green space, and, you know, so you can't do that when the entire backyard is now parking spaces.
So you'd think you would see it on a lot of these individual lots. I mean, it's anytime it goes in front of John Paskey for code review for a building permit, that is when these will get flagged, or anytime Planning Commission. Well, Planning Commission wouldn't see a lot of these single lots. We'd only see anything that was larger.
It seems logical to me that, again, I think the intent was that lots should be combined, and that you would see more development similar to what we have at 140 Mill Street.
Right.
Which is right at the, the T with Stewart Street. That is a, for apartment for an R3 neighborhood, that's pretty standard for how things are done and how things are built.
How does that one?
Yeah, what is that?
What's the coverage on it?
That is, well, that's three lots combined, but let's see if I can figure that out.
Is it just considered one lot now, once they combine?
Probably. The building, so it should be deed restricted, I imagine, but...
Well, each...
I'm sure it's been combined, I would think.
They're combined, they're held together, but they're still three parcels, continuous and contiguous. Combined, they're a little bit over 60. The ones at 69, the other two are pretty close in line with...
Is there parking underneath that thing? I can't remember.
No, there's not.
It's on the rear, the...
I think so on the back, yeah.
Okay. Oh, I can sure hardly make it out there.
There's not someone on one side.
So that's something that I...
There may be parking underneath in the rear as you drive around, I'm not sure.
Okay. It might be a combination or something for...
How about the one on East State Street, 123 East State Street? That was one that has quite a bit of parking underneath as well as around.
Is that one at the corner of Morris?
Yeah, Morris and, that's technically an R, is that a B1 or is that's an R3?
Looks like an R3.
That's R3.
And again, that's several lots combined too. Strange lots.
It's like that's 100%.
It's at about 77%.
77%, okay. So that gives us an idea what we're looking at in terms of we start combining and pooling lots together.
Right.
And again, you discussed the parking requirements, in 97, when you were in Palmer Street, the parking just changed to one-bedroom, one. I think it was a 97 ordinance that required individual parking space for newly converted residences. I know there's been discussion about revisiting that someday, but I don't think that's really what we're talking about right now. And there's always a question of the wisdom of it, too.
Does this have any effect on off-site parking where, in order to, if there are some facilities that it wasn't practical, or for whatever reason they couldn't do underground parking, or underneath parking, that they go off-site? Does that increase that aspect of things?
It requires a variance unless it's within 250 feet, and then it's got to be needed, so I don't think it changes it.
Or they do like sell people and buy a house and raise it and put a cement parking lot down in there?
How about that parking lot on North High, that John Ward's, what's that called?
I think, we did bring that question up before, and I don't want to speak for you, Mr. Loeb, but I remember you feeling that by just changing the design...
It's not on here yet, Mayor. That was built prior.
Or that the parking should fit underneath. Most of these don't have the parking underneath.
But if it was like an older house or something like that?
Well, most of those are grandfathered in.
Right.
Without parking.
Right.
In fact, there's several on...
And that's what you're suggesting, you want it, this would all be grandfathered in, again, it's only if something were to come in front of the code.
There's no way to do it, yeah. The, it's, you know, with sign regulations, there's a lot of legal background that you can amortize the, how long you have a nonconforming sign until it has to be retired, but for something like this, I don't think that's a reasonable way to approach it, that would have considerable cost on a property owner. And you might actually have to tear a building down in an R1 or an R2 or an R3, or modify it, so I would think everything would need to be... So I would think everything would need to be grandfathered in.
Not for this purpose, no.
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion?
If the mayor were to want to put an addition on his house, he would need a variance.
Who, me? Yes.
Turn it down, huh?
I have no plan to put an addition on my house.
Is Mr. Bettner or Mr. Konashigi, are you curious about your priorities?
Yeah, I'd like to see if my...
Yeah, I think we should have some full disclosure here.
Yeah. See if my legal garden shows up as a...
As long as there's no chickens in there.
There's no chickens. It's legal now.
It's got a front yard?
It's in the rear of the yard, thank you.
So you're on Palmer, right?
I'm at Palmer, right in the middle of the 43.
You're way down there.
Yeah, I'm on the south side.
He's way down south.
I'm on just the bitter edge of town.
I see you still have the zoning layer on, too. You look up there, that's Canterbury. See how empty that area is? This is an R1 zone. It has pretty little in there.
There you go, start going.
What's your number?
43. Yeah, right about where your mouse was.
Is that your driveway?
Yep.
Is that correct?
It's this fire pit in the backyard.
Oh, all of that.
Fire pit in the back.
22%.
22%. Look at RJ there.
Plenty of room.
See that garden showing up as a...
As impermeable.
You need to tell...
You got a charge or what?
Is that a shared driveway?
I do, yeah. Well, it's, the lot line's split down the center, so they have about five feet and I got nine or something like that. I haven't threaded them yet.
Harry's up on Longview, right?
Mm-hmm, right.
20%, I feel somewhat inadequate.
You're doing good.
Pay some. Go for it. It's a project your kid can do, you know, for a while. Give him a bag of cement and start rolling around.
Am I going the right way? Here's Mulligan.
Yolongview isn't at the north of that?
No, I think you're going north, you want to go south.
Yeah, I think you missed it. You need to go up Palmero more.
Yeah, southwest. Following Palmero would have gotten you there.
Oh.
Although, I heard you're further down, right? You're near the, I think you're by the Unitarian Church.
Right, right. Right in here at the city limits.
He's right on the edge there.
Yeah, so kind of go, now start going north.
Oh, here we go.
Oh, wow. Harry's in north.
What's the number, Harry?
179.
Way up.
Yeah, you got to go where it splits with you, too.
And realize, one thing it doesn't take into account, what we're looking at is we don't have the topo lines here. So some of the stuff, you know, you just couldn't pave, really. Somebody says that.
Yeah.
Not without a major, you know, runoff problem. Harry's right on the edge there.
Right there?
What's number again?
Wow, your backyard is in the city.
This must be it. That's 178. It's not numbered for some reason.
Because half is outside the city, it looks like.
Yeah. Now, how does that? I think we got to count the percentage that's in the city. The other side doesn't count. Doesn't count, sorry.
I think we'd have to go with the whole lot. Majority of it is in...
Let's annex Harry.
I can make a record.
How about the city council president is next door? He may be out of the city.
He's pretty close. I think his backyard is, too. Can you get a read on it? I don't know.
There we go.
Very selective here.
Nice setback.
13.
Oh gee. And my wife wanted to widen that driveway.
And you held her back, saying...
Now you have no excuse.
Well, in full disclosure, I don't live in the city, but I would like to look at my mother-in-law's house at 17 Townsend.
I don't think that's fair.
Our mothers...
Yeah, probably not. And that's the far east side. I kind of like to see that area anyway.
I suspect there will be some opposition in the R3, some of the property owners there.
Well, this would be... But it's not, it's, I don't know, I feel like with it not performing being fine, and it's only if you're going to be doing a modification, I don't see how that's, there's anything wrong with that.
And it does open the door for variances. If people can say, "Well, I'll be 60% on everything. Why can't I go 35% on my house and 25% on the other stuff?" So, you know, which we would deny them, but that's, that would be the easy ice call.
It's something they can do today as well, though.
Exactly.
Yeah, and they can go above the 30.
Right.
It's looking pretty orange down there, isn't it?
He's got another layer on, too. He's trying to...
That's the B1s right there.
What's the number, Paul?
17. Get ready for my violation.
Pull out your list of political enemies.
Hold on.
We could be, we can't...
Wrap the whole area up, though.
This little exercise here.
Oh, there's still some space available generally. Maybe not at Herb's side, but other sides.
35%, Paul.
So that's not bad.
It's fine.
Okay.
It's all with the acceptance, right? No one was near the 60.
I think you're very rarely going to find an issue in an R1. There's a duplex, actually, on, right there, 17 and 19. And that was at 57%.
Gee, that's pretty close.
Yeah.
And that's grandfathered in, because that's an R1 zone, I think, right?
I think the west side's probably where we'll have more of the problems, the ones that don't have driveways. And where you're seeing, what we saw, 40% on the house and nothing else.
What about the large houses that were built, like on Strathmore? Would they exceed it, do you think? I think that's where I'm...
Strathmore, yeah. Do you tell you Strathmore? I don't think so. I thought the lots were fairly large.
That's actually R2 there, Mayor, by the way.
It is? Oh, there? Townsend?
Yeah, the Jacobs is the line.
Okay. I didn't know that.
R2's 50.
Oh, I forgot it, Paul. R2 doesn't change that much. It's still 30.
No, it's 30. It's just the change in the minimum lot area.
So you really think the west end, maybe some of the north area?
Some of the smaller lots that currently do not have garages or driveways would be the ones that would probably be, but they really don't have room to even build anyways.
Yeah. The topography gets in the way there, just the lot width.
So you're looking at Strathmore and Utah right there.
Well, those may already be up against their total building coverage as well.
Here's a larger one, let's see if we can...
So if they're, if right now, say, someone in an R4 is at 45% for building coverage and they wanted to...
R3, you mean?
I'm sorry, an R3 is at 40% in building coverage and they wanted to make an alteration that required your review. Would the 45% building coverage be grandfathered in?
Depends what they're doing. If they're changing the use, the footprint, the structure, or anything bearing raising a roof, they have to bring it into compliance. So that would either mean a variance or make, that they couldn't do it.
Right.
And that's, we treat every project that way. So if it's got any substantial...
Right, I know that's outside of really this in a way, but...
Well, no, it would affect what's going on.
So what would they be doing that would not?
Interior renovations. Upgrade, you know?
So say if they're at 45 and they have another 20% of their lot is, is covered, they'd have to reduce their house by 45?
And, or, well...
Or I mean, sorry, by 5% somehow.
That'd be a variance, is what they'd probably want to do.
Okay.
And we've had that happen even on an R1. A perfect example is somebody wanting to put a dormer on their house. It's changing the roof line, it's changing the height, and the property was too close on rear, or side yard setbacks and on coverage, and they had to get a variance.
Okay.
Was it awarded?
It was awarded, yeah. Many times they are because it is an existing footprint, but, you know...
So they're more likely to side with someone who's just going up as opposed to how?
I'm sorry?
Well, if someone's raising or adding another story, there's more likely, I mean, to receive a variance if someone were adding an addition, you know, in one direction or another.
Right. Going up?
Yeah.
I'm not, and going out. Could go either way. It's just both of them altering the footprint or the roof line would require a variance if you are currently over or a change of use. If you're already exceeding bulk controls, you have to get a variance.
Okay. Is there any other discussion or questions?
Okay, how about if I move that we recommend the city council to amend Title 23 of the Athens City Code to include total lot coverage definition and to amend the table of bulk controls to include a total lot cover of a maximum of 60% in R zones.
I'll start from this.
Okay, and again, a definition of, new definition of total lot coverage, the ratio of enclosed ground floor area of all buildings on a lot, plus the ratio of the area covered by gravel, stone, shell, impermeable decking, paver, permeable pavement, and any man-made material on a lot that is to a horizontally projected area of the lot expressed as a percentage. And that's also, the lot coverage does not include fences. I'm not sure about number three, the deck.
Yeah, I think that needs to be...
I'll just include one and two, but not number three.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Go ahead, Allie.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah, this is discussion.
Paul, as far as like stone in the yard, I know that a number of homes, homeowners down in the south are gravitating to using crushed rock to replace grass.
Like a pea gravel.
Yeah. So this would affect something like that if, if people wanted to basically, I guess, replace their grass lawn with, with something of that nature that they think might be more...
I think it would impact that, yeah. They would have to probably get a variance for that.
How would that come? I mean, I mean, you don't typically see like if a landscape design in some ways... I'm wondering how you would...
If we were to say gravel, any sort of stone used for parking, it would count. Maybe for the little light decorative stones for landscaping.
It's important to keep gravel in there, though, because...
As it gets compacted.
Well, you could, you could just say, "Well, I'm not going to pave the backyard. I'm just going to put gravel down."
Well, actually, the kind I'm referring to, though, are more, are larger chunks that people are using. That, I see where you're going with the, with the smaller gravel, but like with the larger rock, where there, there might be more opportunity for leakage or drainage into the, into the soil, something of that nature. So that would still be covered under that.
That they're putting the larger rock down.
Thinking like rock on a slope that they put sometimes to prevent...
Root brach?
Yeah.
I know with, what you're talking about, RJ, I've seen some of that stuff where usually they're putting almost like an impermeable base underneath so the weeds don't grow through. So it's not really something that's going to, in terms of stormwater perking, it probably doesn't work that well.
Okay.
So I'd hesitate to take, say, "Okay, that's, that's allowable." But I don't know, you know, there's probably, we've been talking about rain gardens, too, which probably can include something of that nature, too. So I guess we...
I would, I would probably separate landscaping out.
Yeah, I guess that's the, what I'm wondering.
And less used for landscaping.
Right. Yeah, it does not include, instead of three, a deck with gaps, so we could say, you know, landscaping. And that can be interpreted as we need to be. I don't know if landscaping is defined in that.
Number two is 4016, and three or fours are not allowed. I know what the three of them are. We can do it that way.
And I assume that we will not have a public hearing this, but the council will have one on the day.
Yeah, I think that's the best way to go.
Okay.
Harry, you still second that?
Yes, all in agreement.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Any other discussion on our lot coverage requirements as we've recommended to council? All right, well, I thank you, John and Paul, for putting that together. It was excellent and fun. We also have telecommunication towers. This was brought up by Paul Logue a little bit back, and it was something that the comprehensive plan had recommended. I wanted, kind of just to do an initial sort of reading of that, of what was the recommendation of a sort of a sample code by the comprehensive plan group. One of the things I wanted to point out from that, that I found, you know, I thought for the most part what they had in there as a sample is a pretty good thing to follow by, but there was something in there that didn't seem to, would make sense in some places, but maybe not in Athens, and that was restricting cell towers to just the manufacturing or industrial zones. Let me see where that one was.
That's in the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, it was in the comprehensive plan sample one.
Yes, it calls it actually an industrial slash office park development area.
Which venture you were?
19, 20. No, 18, right?
6-18.
Which is, and again, I would assume that would mean manufacturing zone here. I would feel like that would pretty much limit, we don't have very much manufacturing zone in the city. You do kind of have the commercial area on East State Street, as well as, kind of, is that Columbus Road area, Langston? But it seems like with the nature of our topography, that would not do very much if that was the only places that were allowed to have cell towers. And it seems like with people more and more sort of advancing the landline, that that would kind of limit our range. I mean, I know cell service is spotty in my area on the south side.
Well, and the demand on the capabilities of the phone is dramatically changing from year to year.
Right.
What our cell phones did when we had a Razr phone back in 2004, this is the iPhone or the BlackBerry today, like, there's a lot more demand on the phone for it.
Right, so it seems like the ones, towers that we do have, like, those are limited. I mean, I think based on what carrier you have right now, too, of what capabilities your phone would have. So that was kind of the biggest sort of problem with adopting the sample code.
Okay, two things. One, so really what you're looking at is in terms of this page 618 of the comprehensive plan, this is page two portion of the comprehensive plan. You would actually say wireless communication towers may be permitted as condition use in any zone, take it out? Because we probably want a conditional use with conditions, so we have some kind of oversight and what somebody wants to put in. The other thing I will point out is that when I was on zoning board appeals, I think the only time we had to do a variance was for the cell tower at Monticello Village. And at that point, I realized that most cell towers we have right now pretty much are outside the city limits.
Right.
They're on the hillsides around there. So we have very little activity, with the exception of the Roosevelt Tower, which was a reinstallation. And that's where people were actually very much against residential zones. And they did put some literature together at the time, I believe, about distance from houses, et cetera, et cetera. So we may want to pull that stuff out from that, what, two years ago, I guess it was?
With Roosevelt?
Yeah. Wasn't there a whole series of standards that were adopted, were suggested to us at the time?
Yeah.
And you're right, you know, we don't, to eliminate R zones, we don't, I mean, we can't really put anything anywhere.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's sort of, yeah, I mean, we're running into the catch-22 of like, you know, everybody wants power, but they don't want power lines in their yard and want cell coverage, but no one wants a wireless tower in their yard. So, I mean, I think you would have to also, whoever's proposing, again, with the conditional use, would have to put forward a presentation what the coverage would mean if it's here as opposed to here, along those lines. And I think you have to take the topography into account in a city such as Athens.
And again, the address, I think, from the Roosevelt Tower group was the safety of the fall zone or something like that. And that could be something we might want to consider.
Right.
I know the tower had to be highly engineered and permitted for what was on the tower at the time. So there are checks and balances on the state level, too.
Right.
FCC level, I guess it is.
Doesn't spacing also make it somewhat restrictive? I mean, if you're talking about a half mile or one-half mile between sites? As far as a community like Athens, I don't know how wide we are.
We're pretty wide. Well, I'm thinking specifically East State Street from the bypass all the way out. You've got... That runs about three and a half, four miles, I think. As far as I'm aware, the only tower we have there is the one by the Holiday Inn Express. And I would certainly say that that's a good best practice, because most people just think it's a flagpole with the US flag on it. And that's a cellphone tower. And that's a good practice for a cell tower, to conceal it, to camouflage it by making it look like something else.
Right.
Few of us are gonna complain about seeing the American flag every day.
All right, forget some more Ovalus, too.
I'll have to make recommendations on flagpole height.
That would come down to 619, you notice the bottom fine design. You notice it talks about wireless communications, as we subject it review by Architectural Historic Board Review, which I don't know we have one. So, but, and again, I think they're called monopoles when they have that design. I know they don't put the flag up all year long, too, because it gets highly weathered during the winter. That's one thing I... My office feels regularly, it's between November and January, is... And I know they take it down just so it doesn't get shredded or something. So do we, you know, the next question is, who would review a design if we talked about design standards within there? Would that be a part of the code-offs to do?
I would think code-offs. I love adding responsibilities to, John.
Well, we've had a few of them come through, and I know, as you know, that you got state building permits that they have to obtain. And then a lot of these ones now are, what they do is they build the tower, and then they can come in and replace the...
Transpond or anything?
The stuff on top, and they'll sell them out to different carriers as well on the same pole, so...
There are companies in the region and in the state that specialize in actually doing the review for communities in that situation, where they want to confirm the broadcast capabilities of the tower, how much, what's transmitting, heights, all of those, to confirm that it meets federal communications and state law. There are... Last time we brought this up, I'm not sure how it was picked up, but I received phone calls within a week from several different companies stating that if we're going to work on any of this, they'd like to speak with our Service Safety Director. So there are ways we can have an external review at the developer's cost.
That's what I was gonna say.
Probably, I don't know what the cost would be. I would imagine, you know, a few thousand dollars.
Right.
But there's ways, because some of this, I think, is pretty technical when you're dealing with the actual capabilities of a tower that I by no means would make no claims to have the technical capabilities to review that.
So this still needs work. I know that the last time we had this up, Scott and Ron both had some input on this.
And I don't, like I said, I would never claim to be an expert on how we address a telecommunications tower. I think it's... We don't have anything in our books right now, so that's important to note. I think addressing screening at ground level is important. The fencing signage at ground level is important. Making sure that there's emergency numbers and who owns the tower. Those types of issues are important. Making sure that the lighting is to the minimums only of the FCC. If there's lighting that's needed for airplanes and helicopters, that should be the only lighting that they can put on the tower. The co-location, so that we're not having... Making that a requirement. And those are the things I think are important that we have in it. Whether half mile, one mile, quarter mile apart.
Yeah, I don't know.
I guess that would be at the eye of the beholder, and I'm not sure how we should do that. Fall zones, making sure that there's some sort of a radius, it would probably be something you might want to look at. One of the recommendations I... Or one of the requirements in one of the models I gave you was that they... You have to hang a weather balloon at the top, at the height that the peak of the tower would be, and then give some... Put out a press release and let everybody know that the tower, the proposed tower is being reviewed. A weather balloon is hanging at 140 or 200 feet at the location. So if you can see it wherever... If you can see that balloon, that means you'll be able to see the tower. If you can't see the balloon, that means it's not in your view shed. So issues like that, I think, are really what we need to address on it.
Okay.
But like I said, I don't claim to be an expert on it, but I think there's some things. If we tailor a code to account for those, I think we'd have a lot better code than we have right now in relation to them.
Yeah, I mean, I think as far as the actual review of the, on the technical side, of how well the tower would work for the purpose that they're proposing, I think that's out of our hands. But as purely a design standpoint and where it's situated, sightlines and those sort of things, I mean, I think that's well within... Whether it's the planning commissioner or the city of Athens that reviews it, I think we can do that fine. Well, I mean, what I might... I don't know. I guess one thing that might be interesting is for either you or Paula to have a discussion with one of these companies that would review on the technical side. And, you know, to see if they have some sort of checklist or something that they put together that that... What they're looking at. Just so we understand, it's... I'm sure I could probably...
I'd probably get one of them to come to the planning commission. They'd be happy to speak with you guys.
And not for a price. Our review that we did was $5,000 for a Roosevelt Tower. It was after the fact, and since there is nothing on the books now, we really, and we pretty much promised the residents that, you know, best practices, that we need to get something in there, whether or not the city followed it during that time. But the tower turned out to be safe as erected. They didn't review... They had reviewed the design, but it was already erected by the time they...
Again, the tower design has to go through the state on this level. The way that it operates now, and the co-localization is an interesting problem, because the way I understand the process with Roosevelt, they said every time you added a transmitter up there or receiver, you actually had to relook at the design and make sure that the wind load was not off-base on it. So it's not a question of just putting a tower up and saying, "We can tack so much stuff on there," you have to say.
Right.
I will point out that within our city system, of course, we have some dead zones even within our telephone system. Example is Station 2 on Richland. Is, you know, it's hard to believe, but it's down in a hollow and it takes a turn, so there's no real visual way of getting any of our towers to that point. Makes it a little bit more difficult. I think at the very least, if we're gonna start this up, is one thing to make sure that we have, make it a conditional use in the zone, so we have, there is an impediment to say, "Let's look at it." Somebody has to look at it before it gets put out.
Yeah, I do agree. It just needs to be conditional use.
Okay.
In all zones?
In all zones.
And I know Paul Logue suggested the one way to work this out would be to put something, him to put a draft together and us to pick it apart. Or we can do it ourselves, and he can pick it apart. Your choice.
How about Paul?
He likes that better.
Who could take criticism, I guess?
Doesn't matter. It really doesn't.
Well, if you don't have enough on your plate already, yeah, I mean, I think it would be fine for you to work it up. I mean, if we could send, shoot our recommendations, if you have particular language in this that you like or dislike to let Paul be aware of that, so you're not just presenting something you're gonna shoot down. I mean, I think, again, it's a conditional use.
You think it's good about that.
Yeah. I'm sure the mayor's taught you well on that.
I'll put something together. It'll take me at least...
Post-Halloween.
Post-Halloween. Second meeting in November.
I mean, I think there's a lot of good stuff in here, so it's not like you have to throw it out. I mean, again, I think it's just making it more specific to the tastes and topography of the city of Athens. You know, I think when you've mentioned conditional use and whether it be all zones, I think it's fine, because if we're gonna look into where, you know, if it's falling, there's gonna be certain places, zones it just won't work in.
Well, right. That's why I was asking, because I...
But I feel like there's no reason to limit a zone if, you know, unless you want to do the study. If here's our fall area, here's how, you know, how much distance needs from something, can it work? You know, and you want to just pull out zones, then I guess so be it, but...
Well, for addressing fall zones, the radius, the Ms and the B3s are gonna be, have the largest lot sizes.
But they're down low. Most of them are down low.
Right, they're in the valley.
That's what I was trying to say, that the R or the top of the hills are mostly R zones. So that's where, and my guess is where they're gonna want to put these. So that's why conditional use is in the Rs and maybe permitted use with clearance in the Bs or the B3s and the Ms, just something to that.
Yeah, I mean, as long as it still goes under review, I don't have a problem with that. All right. Any other further discussion? Okay, so we will table that for when you're ready, and just let us know or let Shar know, and she'll put it on the agenda. Would you or John like to report on any other matters while we have you here today?
The only thing I have, not really a report, just to allow a notice that I will not be at the next meeting, the first of November 3rd. I'll be attending the State of Ohio Community Development Conference, which is Wednesday and a Thursday and a Friday morning. So I will not be available for that meeting.
I think Shar's going to, right?
Charlene's attending, too, yeah.
So, okay.
Well, thank you both for your service.
That's all I have for you right now.
John? I just wanted to add, we hadn't forgot about the last meeting, that we are still gonna try to get this roundtable discussion scheduled. It'll probably be after Halloween, and we'll get in touch with various parties and we'll get it going.
Okay, thank you for doing that. If there's nothing else to report, we'll move on to announcements and other business. Our next meeting is November the 3rd on Wednesday at noon in this same meeting hall. We had discussed at our last meeting about holding some special evening sessions, and those will be announced when they are planned. Any other announcements? All right, thank you. Disposition of the last meeting's minutes, since everyone had a chance to review that. I know there were a few corrections.
Remove approval.
I'll second that.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. This meeting is adjourned.